Okay, then you might not wanna use your shampoo.
That was throwing your back out and then becoming a fish.
Hey, oh my god, slay.
If you're all not doing actual study, I'm going to prohibit phones for every future study session. Am I making myself clear?
Hello? Are we all here? We're not yet. Kachon's here and Todoroki's here. And Deki, hello. And Tsushima and Shinsu.
And apparently Azawa's not fucking here.
I have my notes from the other day.
I do too.
Yeah.
So what are we actually meant to be doing?
Study.
Do you know how to study, Blasty Boy, or do you need help?
No fucking shit, dumbass.
So you need help? Okay, I'll help you, bro. Don't worry. I got it.
You still makes me hot you can talk like that.
You never answered, okay? I'm gonna help you. You know, five plus five-
I was fucking eating.
No, 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 no. I was speaking. Five plus five divided by negative two, what is that, Bakugo? Bro.
What the fuck did you just-
Oh, we're doing English. I said, five plus five divided by negative two, what is that? Speed it up, speed it up.
Shut the fuck up.
He doesn't-
Anyway, no, we are meant to be doing fucking English.
Oh. They're doing math. Danki told me it was math.
Don't throw me in this.
Bruh, bruh, you said during class, I said, what is it you said? I don't know, math! Now I'm gonna practice my English, bro.
Math, English, what's the difference?
The big difference, numbers and letters, letters and numbers.
I'm so confused on how you'd and others difference.
Accidentally hardened my hand, now my pencil's broken. Say nerds.
Or did you get the nerds, hello?
That's... A good question that I don't remember.
I wanted one, that's why I was asking.
Yo, Deku, what's number one?
Number one? I think it's Washington.
Okay.
Wait, I thought we were doing math homework.
That's what I thought.
How to go from math to English to history?
I don't know. I spelled Washington wrong.
How'd you spell Washington wrong? It spelled out town!
Washington, Washin-gonton.
Washin- ington.
No!
Kon.
I spelled it-
It's not!
I spelled it Wa-h-Washin-gon-ton.
No, it's Wash. Washington.
I'm smart, bro. Oh, I spelled it right this time. Washington. Where's the G coming? Like-
What? The T comes, it's for ton, ton!
No, where's the G coming?
Oh. I'm done, you can fail.
What? No, wa- No, it's Washin-gon-ton is what I'm hearing it is and seeing it is-
No, it's Washington.
Washing machine?
Yeah, like washing machine.
I can spell washing machine.
Just spelled washing and then T O-
Blasty Boy, Bakugo, Bakugo, Bakugo Bro.
What?
What are you doing?
Homework.
Teacher's pet.
What?
Fuck did you just say? Do you wanna-
I can repeat-
Fucking speak up?
I said, I can repeat it, but do you guys really want me to?
It's your funeral.
I said, teacher's pet. I like doing your work, man. Maybe you should help Kami.
Dun's face can suffer.
There you go.
Don't look like an angry pumpkin, Em.
You heard me, Tim. Reminder to lock my door.
I'll just blow the fucking lock off.
You're right next to each other.
What are you, what are you gonna do? I can harden and you can't touch me.
She said.
Not the moment.
Very uncomfortable.
shitty hair, we know that your hardening ability has a limit.
Hey, man!
You guys do realize I'm the only female on the call, right?
That, that, that-
Boo hoo.
That's womanly, bro.
I don't even pretend like you knew I was here. I had a conversation with you two.
I knew you were here.
Are you sure about that?
Yes, I did. I don't wanna harden and break my pen and then like ink goes everywhere.
Oh, that's why doesn't he doesn't let-
Other day, I got ink all over my notes.
What if, what, what if I broke the pen over like... But actually... Stop looking at the camera, Blasty Bro!
You know, you can put hair dye and shampoo.
Hey, Bakugo, have you ever wanted to get ink before? Have you?
Have you bought your fucking coffin?
Okay, then you might not wanna use your shampoo. Danki, run! Run!
What?
Remember last night you put pink in his shampoo?
Well, it's a good thing I switched it with Azawa's then, isn't it?
Azawa's gonna literally-
You don't think I fucking saw that when I squeezed it into my hand, it was pink?
Bruh.
I'm not that fucking dense Dun's face.
Chill, bruh, chill.
This looks a lot like someone I know. Donut? Yo, Kami, bro, doesn't this look like someone you know?
Unless you wanna die, do not fucking answer that.
If you, nah, I can't say that.
I guess he kinda does look like a bush, doesn't he?
He does!
I didn't notice that.
Can I put a bush-
At least I don't look like a fucking frog.
I am a frog, what is your excuse?
Are you a dog? Oh my gosh, you're a dog!
Well, I mean, my mother's a bitch, so...
Nice.
Besides, have you seen my fucking mother's hair?
Yeah, same as yours. Y'all, y'all-
Exactly.
She looks just like you with lashes and makeup on.
Yeah!
Don't fucking-
No, can I put you in a dress and corset? Put lashes on, makeup, you'll just be like your mom. Wait, Azawa's not even here, why are you doing work? That wasn't my-
Because we're good students?
Question.
I was just wa- I was writing pictures of an angry bush-
I haven't been doing my homework this entire time, so I, I don't know why it took you guys this long to realize that.
Some of us don't actually fucking want detention.
Neither has, neither has Madoria or Todoroki. Do you guys not notice that none of us have been working? I'mma eat a whole can of pineapples, if anybody needs me, just call.
Why would you be eating a can of pineapples?
Cause it's pineapples and they're good.
Media.
And we don't have any fresh ones, we only have canned stuff, so I grabbed the biggest can of pineapple I could find.
Hey, Blasty Bro! Blasty Bro!
What?
Wanna go on a date?
Better, oh no, you- Danki, you should run.
Why me?
Or who was it? Or Kirishima?
I'm running! There, I can harden. Once you harden, I can get, I will show you, I mean, I can be hard forever, man, don't-
I think you need to learn to reword things, cause we've told you several times, um...
Oh wait-
There you go, buddy, there you go, you're realizing what you did wrong? This is why the girls laugh at you. You cannot be saying that stuff. And expect us to not laugh at you and make fun of you for it.
The sound of silence.
Oh, I was like very into this. Paragraph.
Paragraph?
Sometimes I just give them, yes.
Hearing that word alone gives me anxiety.
You know, we've gotta write like five to six of them, Dun's face.
Well, you can just put sentences together and then-
It's gotta make sense, dumbass.
You gotta be coherent, so you can have a good job and a good grade on this. Yeah. Cause if you don't, you won't be able to close your classes, maybe you'll find the classes you cannot go on to the next course. So you can be a pro hero, that's all you wanna do. So we can be heroes and we can all do this right.
Deku, shut up.
Anybody want pineapples? I'm like halfway done with this can and I'm getting acidic burn.
Pineapple and pizza, go!
Yes.
It's, it's okay.
Absolutely not.
I love pineapple and pizza light. Danki, you have the best taste, bro.
It adds like a sweet juicy taste to it and it's just-
Yeah, cause it glazes the ham, that's, that's what, cause usually it's paired with, um, Canadian bacon, so it like glazes the ham on it, so...
Oh my gosh, oh shit!
It's just weird after-
I prefer it with cherry wood smoked ham.
I shouldn't say spicy. Damn, you and your gourmet food, Bakugo. I mean, should I say?
The fuck do you-
Bakugo. Damn, you and your gourmet food.
I've never-
He always cooks really well.
Yeah.
Fucking course I do, I'm good at everything.
Mm-hmm. Not social skills, but that's different.
Fuck do you mean?
Okay.
Fucking great at social skills.
You know what they mean.
Dumbass.
I think, for example, uh, just, just, just a sampler.
Hit me up if you nev- if you ever need help with social skills, Bakugo.
I don't need fucking help with social skills, cause I'm good at fucking everything.
You're what? You're what? You're good at what? You're good at what?
I'm good, oh my fucking god!
Who washed U A laundry last? Um... Who had laundry job?
I believe that was class one B.
Well, someone ate my sock, it's gone.
Is it?
Are you sure you didn't just get fucking hungry?
Bruh, I would not eat a sock, that's- I can't even say that.
Now there's something Dun's face would do.
That's what I was gonna say.
Hey, okay, socks is a no-go for me.
Yeah, I could've say, he's eaten some pretty questionable things and many, many batteries, but I don't think socks are on those lists.
Wow, something he actually won't fucking eat.
Someone stole my sock, man!
We should play truth or dare.
I'm not yet.
No.
Yes, uh, Bakugo, I dare you to be nice to Deku for the rest of-
I'm not fucking playing, I never said I was-
I like that. I like that.
I never said I was fucking playing, so that doesn't count.
Well, you said you were great at everything, right? So how can you be great at this if you don't play?
Yo!
Because I'm not a fourteen-year-old fucking girl at a slumber party.
Kamenari is really a fourteen-year-old girl that old.
And I'm not dumb enough to play truth or dare with this group of fucking morons.
Who'd you play it with then? You have no other friends.
No one, that's my point.
Yourself, that's pretty sad, dude. You know what, if you wouldn't play truth or dare with us, kind of a coward, dude.
Yeah.
I'm not a fucking coward.
Yeah, you are, cause you said you're not stupid enough to play with a bunch of morons. Are you scared of what's gonna happen? Are you scared of what's gonna be dead and, and truth? You scared-
Are you scared?
No, because I've pretty much done everything that you guys can fucking think of, cause you're all a bunch of fucking idiots.
You've made out with a wall?
Fine, I dare you to eat salt.
You see, I'm not that dumb. Dun's face maybe, not me.
Hey, I haven't.
No, but you're made out with a wall.
What? Bro! He told you that in confidence, including me, but like-
He literally just fucking outed himself like not even thirty seconds ago.
I didn't actually say that I did, though, I said I didn't, so-
Pretty sure everyone in Class 1A already knows.
Alright, cool.
Remember you told fucking Mina?
Oh, yep.
We all know that she can't keep her fucking mouth shut for anything.
Fuck, I dropped my sucker in the water. Stop, I'm gonna drop my sock!
I'm so concerned.
Why is grass green?
Why is grass green?
Oh wait, um, it's-
I took, I took Mina's Fruit Loops body butter, so, uh, I mean-
No, it's green cause of, um, the stuff that's in it, the plant stuff. You think I would know this, but I don't.
Hopefully Mina doesn't check bathroom.
Chlorophyll, that's what it is, chlorophyll.
Chloriform!
No, chloroph- where'd you get chlor? I said chlorophyll, it's, it's what's in the plant, it's like what's in plants. And it makes them green.
Green!
Mina, save me!
It's like my hair!
And your room, your room's very green.
First!
At the moment.
Yes!
Cause this is LED lights.
Okay. Uh, Omai just told me to, we have to do a... Emergency training, yeah, emergency training.
Don't make it worse than it is. Just, just go.
Hey!
Emergency training with Omai, yeah.
You're not-
Blasty- You managed to make it sound creepy.
It's not creepy at all, it doesn't, it's-
Just, just go, Todoroki, just go.
Just go, for fuck's sake.
Y'all just-
One less idiot in this hall.
See you later.
Do your homework. Goodbye!
I feel like he was like the only one actually studying. Azawa's not here, so I could-
Kirishima, don't drop that.
I did my homework earlier, so...
Kirishima, don't drop that.
Too much lotion on, now my hands are slippery.
Why do you put lotion on? What, what is that?
I think that's protein powder?
Honey, I can't read.
I, I think it's protein powder.
No, I think Kirishima's probably protein powder. Pow, pow, powder. I can speak.
Yeah, I'm assuming it's-
No, you cannot. Danki admitted.
What?
You cannot.
Wait, can you twerk? Or, or would you like throw out your back? I, I refuse to believe you're that flexible.
I'll twerk for y'all.
I was talking to Kamenari.
Wait, I can like-
You just about fell, no, that's not what I'm asking.
Danki, dance competition? Sure. Fine.
No, please don't. We all know y'all can dance.
One piece and I have five minutes.
Okay. You do first dance, a circuit dancer.
What am I supposed to do?
Dance! Make each other-
Hold on, Todoroki, you should join them.
Yeah, you should, do a pretty twirl.
Yeah, give us a little bit of-
We're the best twirl win.
What'd you just do, man?
Wait, didn't Bakugo take like ballet lessons or something?
No.
I believe so.
I did.
Hey, Bakugo, bro.
Shut, fuck up.
Do some pirouettes for us?
No.
They're not that hard, you just gotta like, you know?
Besides, there's carpet on the floor, so even if I wanted to do them, I wouldn't be able to do them properly.
I can do it on carpet, bro!
Yeah, I'm not getting fucking carpet burn on my feet.
Oh, carpet, right.
I, I already get fucking burns on my hands from my explosions.
Go, bestie.
Wait, what was I doing? I can like break dance?
No, you cannot.
I can break dance.
I highly do not believe you.
It's like this.
No.
That's how it's done.
That is not broken, I don't know what that was, that was throwing your back out and then becoming a fish, I don't think that-
Hey, oh my god, slay, Kamenari. You go, bestie. Bakugo, dance with them.
No.
Do the Macarena.
No.
Why not, slay that shit?
Fucking stupid.
I thought you were the best at everything! Prove it to us.
No. I'm not a fucking idiot.
So you're not the best at everything?
I am, I'm just not a fucking idiot.
Well, if you were the best at everything, you would prove it. So clearly you're not.
No, I'm just actually, uh, you know, doing whatever classwork we have to do, so that I don't get a fucking detention like you morons.
Danki, put the chair down.
I wasn't talking to you, frogface.
But you said you're a moron. And you're talking to the general public.
I can do the same thing!
Well, the people that I normally call morons are here.
Danki, Kirishima.
Don't pretend like you don't. Wait, who's all showing up to the gossip circle tonight?
Me! What?
No.
What?
None of you are invited.
What?
No, it's, wow, who is correct? It's for girls only.
Uh, it's girls only.
Are you assuming my gender?
Then what was the point if you guys fucking asking us if literally everyone in here except for you two are male?
Asking, Su was asking who of the girls is coming? That's not-
Yeah, and there is only one girl, and we all know with your personality, Mina, you would be there.
No, cause you, I kind of want to brag that we have parties that are cool and you guys just sit on your asses.
Shinsu's always invited to our gossip circles, that's just cause it's Shinsu.
Actually, yeah, why is Shinsu here?
Right.
Because you're here.
Yeah, cause you're here. Sorry, what's that?
He's a part of Class 1A who do in our hearts.
And also because he's Azawa's kid.
I, I like-
Azawa's not even here!
Yeah, he's not even here.
Why do you think I've been doing my fucking work?
Because you're a buzzkill.
Because Shinsu will snitch on anybody to Azawa.
He only snitches on you, I've done tons of things around him, he just doesn't care.
I'm just saying, Azawa's gonna know that you guys haven't been doing your work.
I did art work, I drew you. And then I wrote A plus three.
Get closer to the camera, I wanna see it.
Oh, that's amazing.
You gotta bring it close to the camera.
My amazing artwork.
Closer, closer. There you go. Oh, it's amazing, I love it.
Why, why does your name say Kamenari?
I didn't do that.
You can't, who did that?
Who did that? I didn't do that!
That's funny.
I actually really like that.
Slay, Su. I have a little obsession with the word slay.
We know.
It's a great word.
Bakugo, be nice. Thank you, yay.
Why should I?
Because sometimes when you're mean, I wanna slap you.
Why can't you be nice for like two minutes? I refuse to believe you have a single nice bone in your body.
Well, I refuse to believe that Deku has any bones left in his body, so...
See, there you go, changing the subject.
Why bully Deku?
It's fun, though.
Madoria's mean.
You know what's fun? Bullying you. So why don't we all do that, and then you know how it feels?
Well, I-
You can just come back at you.
Period.
Kamenari, you had a good idea.
Wow, fucking once.
Kamenari, I can't get over that.
I'm gonna keep saying that, cause it's awesome. Kirishima, why are you just like staring at your phone? Look up, talk to us.
Everybody's staring at their phone, have you not noticed?
I'm not staring at my phone.
Yeah.
Shitty hair.
If he responds to you, Bakugo-
Kirishima answered-
Shitty hair. There we go.
I'm mad.
What?
Kirishima, I'm gonna slap you.
I ain't slapping no one!
No, I'm slapping you.
It's gonna slap you because you responded to me and not her when she said your name.
How dare you? You're a mean bitch.
So was like everybody else in this hall, let's be honest.
No, Danki's just weird, he's not mean. You're not mean.
I mean, yeah, I mean, I'm thankful you don't think I'm mean, but...
You can, you can slay shit. Exactly, that's it.
Right, I'm amazing.
Yeah, indeed. Bakugo's mean, he's like mean, mean.
That's it.
Did you just forget your password?
What? No, definitely not.
How did you, what?
Is that a cat or a dog?
I think Kamenari forgot his password.
That's a dog, it's, it's a dog.
No, 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 on this, it's one of those things where it's like, oh, pick the image that looks like Bakugo.
Oh, I thought, I sent you an image.
I saw it.
And so I thought, yeah, I thought you were talking about that.
Badly drawn cats. Gonna let me, you're not- Nts, 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 nts.
Kamenari, no.
Yes. Stop it, get some help.
It's what we should be saying to you. Your motherfucking button batteries you've eaten.
Hey, Bakugo, you don't have to be mean about it.
Well, we're getting help, I think Bakugo-
It's not mean if it's just stating a fact.
Yeah, Bakugo can be mean, but, cause he ate batteries, I mean, how dumb do you have to be to eat batteries?
Mm-hmm.
I feel personally attacked.
Good.
Cause you are being personally attacked, it's about you! Oh, Izawa's here.
That's what I said.
I thought you meant I'm glad he's not here. I didn't hear really the full sentence, and now I'm bad.
Oh, hello, Izawa.
Hello.
Mina, check your messages.
Oh, sorry, I will.
What's going on? What have I missed? What am I late for?
No, no, nothing.
Fucking everything.
That's what she said.
Bakugo needs anger management.
Yeah.
No, I just need to not be in a class of morons.
Sounds so cool.
Bakugo, would you like to elaborate on what I've missed?
Hold on.
No, he would not.
I'll be back, I have to go do some things.
Um. Mina tried to get Kamenari to twerk. Kirishima also twerked. What else? Uh, none of them have been doing the work that you assigned.
I did work!
You've been drawing really horrible pictures of me on your page.
Two once?
Um, Kirishima's been eating protein powder. Uh, Midoriya ended up leaving for training with Allmait. Don't even probably know the rest.
Drinking protein powder.
Midoriya?
Shut up. Not going to question that. So basically.
I have fucking slept.
Shut up. I haven't either.
Oh my god, look at the profile picture.
And if you say anything about me while I'm gone, I'm not cooking for you guys tonight. Well, I suggest if you want food, you better do what he says, otherwise someone else is gonna have to cook.
Mister Izawa, don't encourage him.
I can cook, I just can't guarantee it's good. I also can't guarantee that I'm actually allowed to use the kitchen.
Exactly.
We can order food.
Pizza, with pineapple.
No, not with pineapple. Stop it.
Shado Todoroki, I do hope you're doing study on your phone.
Skittles. Not sponsored.
Yes, yes, he is. We can confirm.
I hope so, otherwise I'll have to confiscate that phone.
You can study on your phone, right? I could study Pinterest.
Yeah, you can do that. I think that's a good idea.
As long as Pinterest is reference and you're not actually staring at it for different aesthetics to use, then yes, you may use Pinterest.
See, go Kamenari.
Is that why you look disappointed in us?
When am I not disappointed?
When, when I told you happy birthday?
Aside from that.
Yeah, but like, look at Kirishima's profile picture. You can't not be disappointed in that.
Oh, I can. For many reasons I'm not going to name.
Why are you looking at us so weirdly? Kirishima, stop with the faces. Why do you keep doing that?
Recreating my profile picture.
It's not working.
No!
Uh.
Ignore that.
Kamenari.
Oh my god. Go away!
Are you receiving phone calls while you're meant to be studying?
No, 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 no. I got a message and I accidentally clicked call. It was a complete accident, and then my phone froze, so I couldn't get off it.
You're an idiot.
Why does that not surprise me?
I was charging it, that's what I was doing.
You're an idiot.
Why does that not surprise me?
How dare you? I trusted you with myself. And now you just betrayed my trust? Kamenari Danki, Kamenari Danki, how dare you? I'm so mad and feel so betrayed. Mister Izawa, tell Danki he cannot take screenshots of my face. I trusted you.
Focus on your studies.
It is a study, it's a study of my face. It helped him.
I'm questioning everything.
I'm spinning.
Whee!
Are you charging your phone, Danki?
Kirishima, stop going so close to the camera. I'd like to announce something very important for everyone who is studying right now. Slay besties, you can do this, yee-haw.
Very motivational.
Thank you, thank you.
Now get back to studying.
I am studying. I'm being very good right here. I am studying the, um, the, the laws of phone.
Why was there hesitation when you were trying to respond? You know how I mentioned confiscating phones? If you're all not doing actual study, I'm going to prohibit phones for every future study session. Am I making myself clear?
Why do you keep? Kamenari?
Maybe I should confiscate your phone first, Kamenari. How would that sound?
Yeah, Kamenari.
Mina, stop him using the phone charger.
I'm doing that, see?
You don't have pen and paper for that.
Because I work better on, you know, just electronics, like they speak to me, you know?
They speak to you when you charge them. Get back to work.
Go, bestie, sly Kamenari.
Ashido, you're next.
But.
No buts, back to work.
I am working.
Sound of silence.
Gonna be the sound of mic if you all don't focus.
I've done my studying. I know it's a shock, but I, a shock, but I did.
So is there a reason why you're trying to distract everyone else?
Cuz it's quiet, and I feel like there's no point in being in a call if we're not gonna talk.
It's really quiet.
Most study sessions are. Unless you have the occasional distraction. Kamenari.
Huh? Be nice to Mister Kamenari.
I'll start being nicer when he starts being a little less distracting to his classmates.
I don't think he needs to. It might be cuz of his quack.
You need more training.
Me?
Not you, Eri. Kamenari.
Mister Calamari. Like the food.
I think that may reflect. Who taught you that? Eri, who taught you that?
Why?
Who taught you that?
Why?
Just tell me, who taught you that, and I won't let them get into trouble, okay?
Hmm, what are you gonna do? What are you gonna do to him?
I'm just gonna have a nice talk, okay?
I wanna be in the room then.
You can be in the room.
Promise not to be mean?
I promise not to be mean.
It was Miss Mina.
Kamenari, if you're addressing everyone, you're on mute. He's on the phone. Of course.
Dazawa!
Yeah.
So, uh, Mister Mike took me to, um, the shop the other day, and I saw these really cool onesies, and I wanna get matching ones for all three of us.
You wanna get matching onesies?
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure I can make that happen.
A unicorn, a sloth, and, and a stitch. I thought Mister Mike would want the stitch, you would want the sloth, and I wanted the unicorn.
Why did I get the feeling I'd be the sloth? You know, I can't even be mad at that. We'll make sure we get those onesies. What about Shinsu?
He would also get the sloth. That looks like you took a bite of a pickle chip.
Pickle chip?
Yes, it's, 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 they come in the jar and they're the little chippies.
Eri, these are crumpets.
I'm not the smartest crayon in the box.
Okay, I don't remember if it was myself that taught you that or someone else taught you that, but whoever it was, I taught you well.
What do you mean?
What I mean is I'm very proud.
Also, don't come in my room, I'm bleaching stuff.
You're what? What was that last bit?
Bleaching.
Why do you have bleach? Where did you get bleach?
I found a really old pair of sweatpants, and I wanted to de- decorate them.
Eri, you can damage them if you're not careful. You know this, right?
I put wa- I put cardboard under them.
Did Mike give you this idea?
No.
Did you come up with the idea on your own, or did someone convince you?
TikTok.
Of course. Eri, you do know you're not old enough to be using that app, right?
But it's originally meant for kids.
What's meant for kids?
Originally, yes, but the guidelines have changed.
What's changed?
Eri, the guidelines say thirteen and older now.
What's thirteen and older?
Get back to work, Kamenari.
I'm intrigued now, I'm sorry.
Get back to work.
I finished my study.
Do more of it.
Didn't pick up.
Do more study.
Why? I've done it!
Cuz I'm your teacher and I'm giving you extra work.
Studying these.
Anyway, Eri, if there's anything else you want to bleach and change color, you wait until I'm home, okay? I will help you.
But I was having fun.
You can have fun, you can also have extra fun with me helping you, okay?
But that's not fun. I like being independent. Hey, if I made you a project, would you, would you keep it in your room, Mister Dazawa?
Yes, I will keep it in my room.
Yay, okay.
Kamenari, is there a reason why you're laughing?
Yeah, it's cuz your mom.
What am I going to do with you? Wait, was that raccoon eyes?
What's Mister Kamenari laughing about?
Mister Izawa, I wouldn't use your shampoo if I were you. He's my morning alarm, Kamenari. What is wrong with you? This is the Box Squad rap. See what I fucking put up with? Mm-hmm. All the time. Why do you want a chair?
Does anyone want a cool Peppa Pig picture?
Anna Ishido? Ishidoo? Free, free. Bakadoo? You admitted earlier, you did not study. Don't give me sass, Ashido, or I'll give you detention for a month. I'm done. It should all be at least five pages, but you can go over. Yes. Sorry.